Do the pledge.
And there's nobody here from the, who's here from the planning board?
There we go.
Oh, yeah, Dave.
Same.
Hi.
You see it from every board.
It's just bored.
Oh.
That well.
Anybody?
But out.
Do you know about the planning board?
And she had written up essentially a nice thing.
I read that. That's exactly what we talked about.
Yes, yes. So.
Dave, you want to give the general public an overview of what the planning board's thoughts are on the matter?
Well, I think we just want to bring everything up to, up to the twenty-five instead of back in the eighties. Because that's what it is.
Eighteen eighties?
Yeah. Because this is when, you know, we started with this, uh, with the fee stuff. Um, she went, she did all the market value comparisons and came up with, uh, this fee schedule that you'll see on the next page where, um, it's pretty comparable to everybody else and the planning board is comfortable. We've had a lot of people miss the routine of what the planning board does when they come. Um, nobody really explains what's going to happen at the meeting. Uh, the, so the fee schedule always got put on the back burner and then they got walloped when they came into the meeting not knowing what the fee was going to be. This should help give people a sort of an idea of what a twenty-five lot subdivision is going to cost them from beginning to end, which is really what we're missing and solidifying the fact that there are other fees involved. It's not just pay the planning board and you get your permit. You know, there's plumbing fees, there's building permit fees, there are other fees all, all combined into this one, one thing. But the biggest thing is the cost comparison. Uh, as you see, we're, we're pretty middle of the line. We're not, we're not going crazy here.
In terms of neighboring communities?
Neighboring communities.
Yep.
And, and what's here would, is where we'd be, where we would be put, um, among other communities than Newthing.
We're going to be, we're going to be the average of all the other communities.
Who will be higher than us?
Uh, Gardner, I think, is higher. Um.
Sabat.
Sabat is going to be higher.
Yeah. Winthrop's higher with the subdivision, the fifteen lot subdivision.
We don't, we have half as many subdivision applications as the other communities. So, uh, the ones that we do have, it's a long drawn out affair. We've been doing, doing it for two hundred and fifty dollars for ever. Uh, and, you know, you have three or four meetings. The cost gets up there. You know, it's just, you know, the devil is in everything else. Everybody else is, uh, really counting how many times they're coming back and, you know, trying to put a value on it. And this has been going on. This, this actual problem here, it started long before, um, Bell started. You know, we wanted to change it as we went through the comp plan routine back six years ago. Because it was one of the first things we, we looked at in the comp plan was fees. Because we had to pay for the comp plan. So everything was, was brought to the surface. So this has been on our plate for a while.
I make a motion, we close the public hearings for, unless there are other comments for the planning board fee schedule and move to item number three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ken, second by Chris. Close the public hearing on the fee schedule and move on to item number three. Which is to consider adopting the proposed.
We're going to vote on it first. I'm going to vote.
Yeah, we got to vote. Post paper. Should be doing this. Number three is to consider adopting the proposed fee schedule, planning board.
I make a motion, we adopt the proposed fee schedule, uh, for the planning board.
I'll second that.
So it was a motion by Ken, a second by Chris to adopt the proposed fee schedule for the planning board. All those in favor? And this will be on our warrant in June.
Nope, we have the authority to set it.
We fixed it.
You fixed the fees.
We do.
Yeah, we have the authority to set it.
That's why it's separate.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, I believe that was Isabella's.
We, we set the fees. We don't fix the fees.
We set the fees. We set the fees. We have the ability to set the fee.
So, it has been set.
If he is now set.
When any new applications will.
Will fall under this new fee schedule.
Ones in process, of course, you can't change.
And when will this take effect?
Any new ones?
Any new, anything new from this point forward?
And then on to approve of the minutes for February fifth. And I thought that they were, as always.
I think the only thing I would want amended is to say on number ten that it is with the grant that the age friendly committee had written. I think that's the only thing to approve the purchase of the funds using. That's the only thing I think I'd like added.
With the grant?
With the grant, yes.
Yes. I make a motion, we accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
For the motion by Ken, second by Chris to accept the minutes with a proposed amendment or a reading in favor. Thank you. Next is to.
I don't see him, do you? Unless he's somewhere else. There's only one participant. I don't see anybody in the waiting room, so.
Just saying. Mark's not there.
Is he texting somebody? Oh, okay.
I'm going to pop that thing over on the way.
I don't know.
It's, you gotta click on a button. Even click the button.
A button?
Some button. The participants button.
Oh, goodness gracious.
So.
My wait.
No, he's, he texted me. And he said, is there an issue with Zoom? I'm in, waiting to join, but it says the host has another meeting in progress. And I went through this with Dennis to make sure I was clicking on the right thing to open the meeting, so.
And it's not in participants. You can send him an invitation. If he's, uh, if he's got access to his email, you can send him an invitation.
I'm going to have to walk over there.
Yeah.
Because I can't see that. I mean, I can see, you know, I can see the words. Beware.
People wouldn't.
Yeah, but he's not in that meeting. He's somewhere else.
So I think you might have started up on a different Zoom meeting than the one that was publicly posted. So we may have to apologize to people.
You have to. Have to return to meeting because I just went here and did what Dennis told me to do because
Well then.
Zoom is always a different bird. It says Town of Monmouth down the corner. And it says Town of Monmouth. It's almost the one I'm using.
And is this the recurring meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there must be a mismatch between what got posted and the actual recurring meeting.
Like Doug said the other day, this is why we hate Friday. Can you go up there and see if you could send him an invite to that meeting?
Yeah, you can, from that, you can go.
I think when you're in it, there should be.
Yeah, go to the meeting itself, Chris, and then just invite participants. So go to participants. Yep, click on that and go invite and then put in his email and just text him that you're sending him an invitation. And you can use the right, uh, right number. Steve, does, does your, uh, does, does your other town, um, pay any attention to these, uh, reports? Yeah? Even in Winthrop?
How do I know that? Because every report I print for us, even though it's for Winthrop, it says Monmouth.
Go there again. I can take a picture of what the meeting number is on the clock. See when you're in that invitation at a meeting number.
The invite.
On the invite thing. Says seven, two, two, take a picture.
Can't he telephone in?
Uh, yeah, he could just call in if he doesn't want the video stuff.
I, and I can text him on your phone if you want.
It's out of our phone, uh, in his car.
No, because listening to any emails. Any emails, so.
Oh, so you can't email?
Yeah.
Yeah, just have him turn. You put them on.
There you go. Don't say anything bad.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Secret.
Alright. That's a lot of choices.
That's the humor about you. You can see it is, first reports, three-page report, that's your, Harrison report, like January, it goes back to November, to, uh, November, December, and January calls and percentages of up, downs, and all of them, month to month. And you can see January, uh, it runs from January third to January thirty-first. And a lot of our calls are down because Dana wasn't out there stirring up trouble during that timeframe.
Right. How is Dana?
He's doing well. He's, he's home resting, bored, actually going back to work.
When can he be back?
And he can walk.
He's a long way though.
Yeah.
Oh, he is.
He hasn't put any weight on his leg yet.
He's still, he's still health state. It's going to be a while. But that, that just breaks down the, the numbers of calls we've had, what we've had, the calls. That includes, uh, fire calls in there as well as EMS calls. The larger, the larger report has calls broken down by day or week and hour of the day, so you get an idea of how to come in. Our busiest times are, it's going to be on Friday. And seven and eight in the morning.
I create as much trouble as I can.
Yeah. And this full package here is, what, um, year forty-four?
Oh, and I left my mouse up there. Yeah, Mark has the pass code too. He should. Yeah. Oh, sorry, Mark.
Hey, sorry, I'm late. My, my people want to have the wrong info.
It's the Zoom world, so the bane of mine and Doug's existence.
You're looking good. I mean, you're looking tan. Been in the sun.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit.
Well, we haven't been, so. We've been in the wind.
We hate you, Mark.
We might have, yeah. Yeah. Gosh. Oh, goodness.
So in the, in the larger report you have there, it shows comparisons from twenty, year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Your year breakdown. Again, if you notice, in twenty-two, the first five months, there are zeros, that because that was before we were on the Spelman system, we were on the old system. Everything that starts, starts in June. But just some, some thought for you guys to, to, look, over again, it's, that just covers all of your staff calls for heat, fire, and ambulance.
Steve, there seems to be a big jump in welfare checks and in community police policing. You want to reflect on that?
The, the welfare checks, um, have increased a, as the, uh, state is seeing it as laws and its actions in the past are not notifying us when someone may be in crisis, they're giving that handout. Agencies, other agencies from the state, uh, Davis DA, uh, DHS have reached out to us and get that they have a concern on someone's welfare, send us that.
Yeah.
But outreach. Um, community policing, the, um, it's basically used for when we do our Meals on Wheels, which is every Wednesday. Uh, and then time to time when we're sitting in the school zone, there are community policing complaints. It's been a busy week. We had a.
Nice big U-Haul.
Bit of a chase yesterday in the U-Haul. It was stolen out of, out of Auburn that ended up crashing into a Ben X truck.
Oh, really? Oh, was anybody hurt? I didn't know.
Fortunately, fortunately, uh, the ones that were hurt the most were the ones in the U-Haul. Driver of the U-Haul is sitting in county jail right now and his passenger is also red cited. He had several warrants over his arrest for class A trafficking and failing to show up in court. That was the reason why they were running. Other than the fact they were installed.
Who steals a U-Haul?
Just, just over the one that's lying on the one.
Did you, did you give Mark the code to get into the meeting? How did Mark get into the meeting?
Somebody gave him the code of the meeting.
Can you give him the, this person?
Yeah, the code, the code that's in the paperwork is not the right code to get into this meeting.
Yeah, can you text the code? Just, you're me right now, so don't say anything.
You can ask it back there. Going to send Shana Bellows.
What's that?
We're sending Shana Bellows to the.
Hey, go right in.
That's forwarding, right?
Checking account numbers. Make sure it's a deposit.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We love your reports.
Yes.
I, I always wanted to do that.
Okay, on to, uh, select award reports. I did get a, an email. I think we all got an email from Steve Kalenda about heating the, um, heating the old academy. You didn't get? I didn't get one. He sent it, well, it indicated that he sent it to all of us.
I didn't get it.
So anyhow, there seems to be some, um, contention in town about whether it's worth it to, to heat the academy.
So let's talk about penny wise and pound foolish. So we've already invested, you know, close to what? That original budget was one point seven and then we've got another ninety worth of donations that people have given us. And penny wise and pound foolish, so we don't heat or insure the building and let it have something happen to it and all that money we've already invested go down the tubes because that makes so much sense. Um, I just can't even imagine why we would want that building to fall down around itself after we've already invested this much into it. So that's, that's my thing. I don't, I don't understand why people wouldn't want to protect their investment that they've already made. So.
Can you review again why it needs to be heated?
The reason it needs to be heated is because the longer a building stays, um, unheated, the more, um, damage and things can happen to the brick, mold, um, Dave, you can probably expand on that.
Sheet rock.
The sheet rock, any, all these, the roofing, anything that's been done to it, so. I follow that sensation, yeah. No, I must have been athlete directed. Then didn't it? No. Doesn't it? You need to mute yourself, Buffy. Doesn't it, it to be insured?
Is it not insured right now?
Um, right now it has liability insurance and it's on the market right now. They're asking questions daily, um, between Dawn and Dawn's answering questions from the, um, uh, which is the people that are looking for the insurance for it right now, so. And it also has electricity, the CMP meter on it, so somebody has to pay the CMP bill. And, uh, you know.
What's plan B if it doesn't, if it doesn't get town funding?
I guess I'll stand out on the street with my tin cup. So. There'll be several people out on the street with a tin cup. There's, there's several fundraisers for it that all the monies will. And there's five grants submitted right now for it, so. They're waiting on hearing. Steve Eldridge is actively submitting grants and writing and looking for donations. And he, you know, weekly looks at his grant things that he gets and is working on.
I think as, as soon as we get the comp plan finished and passed, the easier it's going to be for them to get one.
Exactly.
Well, that, and finding a way to get our auditor to do two audits in a single year, which is what we asked for last year and didn't happen.
That, that's what it takes to get up-to-date monies exponentially. And, and the comp plan is on board, is on target for you.
Has the committee looked into becoming a five oh one C three? Well, does it have to if it's?
Well, it's already the town. The town is non, is, no, yeah. Yeah, so.
What, what, what happens if the town doesn't support the academy? Is it, is it going to stand there derelict? Is it going to be razed? What's going to happen?
Or sold?
Or sold to repurpose somehow?
I guess that, you know, the fundraising's ongoing. There was, the state had that, uh, um, article on there for historic preservation of monies. And that was passed, so I know that we've been talking with Craig Hickman's office about working with that and will actively put in for that once they put that funding structure into place for it. I know that that is coming up and they're going to alert us when it, they're talking about it. So Dr. Bougie, Steve Eldridge, and I plan on going when they have the public hearing on that. So, um, we're going to be there for that, talk about it. So, um, you know, we, the Town of Monmouth, as I've said a million times, is not alone in the fact that they have a project that, um, because of COVID was stopped in its tracks. Our architect is dealing with it with several of his projects. Our, uh, construction manager's dealing with it with their projects they are working with. It's not the first time they've run into this, so, you know, I don't, I understand why we would raise a building that we just put a brand-new roof and windows in. I don't understand that that makes sense, so, you know. I think, I think that is putting the cart before the horse too because you need to let it play out and, you know, not determine what we're not going to do or what we have to do until all the avenues of what we can do. Yeah. Are exhausted, you know? And I know I'm probably reaching to the fire here, but when you look at the history of that building, you look at the people that have gone to school there, the, you know, the famous people, the, you know, it, it would be damned a shame to not support the, the idea of what that building is. You know, going back to the eighteen hundreds and, you know, the, the beginning of Monmouth really. And, and what the, the academy, the academy really put Monmouth on the map when it came to schools. Because, and I, you, you know, this Doug, you were teaching there when they were winning the awards and things. No, not when we were winning. In the eighties and nineties, people came here to see what they were doing at that school because everybody was doing so well and scoring so well. And, you know, there's just so much, there's so much history there. You just, you know. And as I've said multiple times, there'd be no Cumston Hall if there wasn't a Monmouth Academy. Because the reason we have a Cumston Hall is because the Cumston family moved to Monmouth to put their son and daughter through the schools. And, um, Dr. Cumston graduated from Monmouth Academy, went on to, you know, teach in Boston and all of that. And then put up the money and built Cumston Hall and sold it to. Exactly. Sold it to the town for a dollar. You know, we. All of the, the real places that are important to us as a community. The Fairgrounds, Cumston Hall, you know, the academy. You know. This. But the other part of it too is that what do people ask for is space. I mean, I booked a meeting for the. a meeting for the Monmouth Academy trustees two months ahead because this meeting room is so busy that, you know, we need space. And so hopefully when we get that done, we'll have a bigger space to vote, which everybody asks for and wants.
And the income from that building that you'd be able to, and Dennis has shown this with just Cumston Hall and him managing that and what, you know, how that has funds have grown from that. And, you know, the weddings that, you know, receptions and, you know, parties and different things. I think it will well offset any of the the funds. You know, the the money that's spent on it once it's completed, you know, the the general upkeep of that building once it's up and running, you know, keeping a building at what 50 degrees.
So we haven't exhausted all possibilities by any means.
Kevin. And in talking with our architect, I mean, there's things that they've worked on for, you know, eight to 10 years that they've been, you know, just doing this when they have the money, this when they have the money, this when they have the money. It's not the first one. And, you know, for as much as we feel defeated at times, we know that we're not alone in the struggle to to fund a project because right now, I think everybody's run into it, no matter what they're building a deck or a, you know, a house. So the what they thought it was going to be wasn't what it ended up being. So.
Have you guys created a cap on the finances of how far you want to go with something with this situation? I mean, I I went I went to school there. I I'm very, I I honor and see the privilege, I think, of us keeping the building. But Business 101 tells me that at some point, can we financially afford? Have we realistically set a cap, a financial cap on what we don't want to spend?
We don't know how deep the pot is. Yeah. I know that we planned on needing, you know, $700,000 to finish it. But I don't know what what do you mean a cap? We haven't asked the town for anything other than for that initial amount of money, which was overwhelmingly approved. And then we're asking for money to insure it and to pay the electricity and to heating to 50 degrees. So. So we are not asking the town for any money.
No, no, I'm I'm not I'm not I'm not asking to get you upset. I'm just saying, is there is there an amount where you guys say, all right, it's getting deeper than we had imagined? So I I definitely don't want you to get upset to be defensive. I'm just looking at the finances.
Defensive about this project because it's part of who I am and it's something that I've bought into and believe in. But I will always defend this project no matter what. But I think that I don't I I mean, a cap? I don't. We're not. I don't under I I guess I don't. I don't think we have a cap other than we're saying all we're asking for is money to insure it, heat it and pay the minimal electricity. And that's it because there's electricity. So CMP has a charge even though there's no, you know, lights on in there. There's a meter on it and you get a charge from CMP. So.
I I don't I don't think there's anything we're going to do. We're not going to come to any resolution. All we can do is put together a budget, put it out to the voters, and the voters can either decide, yes, we're going to support there, so no, we're not.
Exactly.
And if they decide they're not, then we then we've got to make some decisions or figure out how we're going to move forward after that.
And do we make it a 501(c) and remove it from the town and it has to self-fund?
Say that again, please.
Well, if the town doesn't want to support.
Right.
And but there's monies, you know, the donations that we have for it and reach a point where you put into it what your donations are. And then if you have to take it over from the town, then you have to take that step. So I think it's kind of cart forcing.
There's a lot of people who've donated.
Exactly.
Already expecting that their donation is going to be used for something like
A window.
A window.
And that the building will be completed.
Yes.
So we can't really.
It's ongoing.
Say sorry.
Yeah. I think I think budget wise, it it really, you know, you spend and spending as it comes in based on what we know we can accomplish with the funds that we have available. We're not going to make commitments that
Any other and we we kind of jumped from select board reports into public comments.
Maybe this can put interest that we went on. We keep hearing about the comprehensive plan happens sometimes and that's a significant stumbling block. So we're going to bake this cake and put the, you know, put the comprehensive plan in and hope that it assists the academy. Why don't we bake the cake before we, you know, give up the ghost here? And we're waiting for that. So the comprehensive plan is the big hurdle. Let's get to that hurdle and then see how we land. And I think based on what I'm hearing, I'm an expert on comprehensive plans, but I keep hearing that that's a big element of what's going on. Am I correct in that?
With grants, yes. Those are the things that grants look for.
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plans and audits.
The most recent audit.
Yeah.
And we are like, well, actually, we're better than most communities our size because there are many communities, very small communities around Maine that are four and five years behind on their auditing. We're only one year behind on our auditing and that's because auditors are hard to come by. We mentioned to the auditor that this was an ongoing problem the last time we saw them about a year ago. We're expecting the auditor momentarily. Sometime in a month or so before we before we figure out the 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 budget proposal, final budget proposal. And it's high on our agenda to figure out a plan for doing two audits in a single year and pressuring the auditor to make that happen. Maybe it's not pressuring. Maybe it's like saying to the auditor, what's it going to take? Yeah, because we don't want to push them too far and then lose our lose our auditor and then be like all those other small towns around Maine that don't have audited records.
We're looking for a map or compass here. It sounds like we need two ingredients, comprehensive plan and the audit. And we give that time once those are in place to see if the grant applications work well. Before we ever arrive, what Deline was talking about, the Bible, there's a there's a core set or a follow a direction.
Yeah, we're in a whole big pattern.
So we don't know what the insurance cost might be.
Because it's still on the market.
But we've, yeah, we're still shopping around the insurance. Okay. But we do estimate that the cost of heat and electricity for the next budget budgeted year would be about $8,000. That's the assumption.
And then you figure, I mean, I, from what they were kind of throwing around out there was, you know, insurance, I'd assume in the 15 to $2,000 range because that's pretty typical.
Three depending upon the market because the market is hard right now. I mean, all over the country. So.
So.
So just FYI, that's the scale of expenses that we're talking.
Right. Yeah.
I'd say 15 and figure out three.
You're the insurance lady.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying. Insurance right now, there's so many people getting out of the business that and especially with a commercial building like this and then and under construction. It's very particular. It'll be more, it'll be way more than it will be once it's finished. But once it's finished, it'll be, you know, based on the value of what they say. So.
And then they're already like.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly.
Well, you're in insurance day too. So you get that.
And your guess then is?
15 to three. Yeah.
15 to what?
Three.
15 to 3,000, 1,500 to 3,000 a year for insurance.
And one of the concepts that we talked about at our last meeting was that this would be a separate warrant article on the ballot in June. So folks get to voters get to consider this in a separate thing. Seems to be a fair way of proposing it to the voters. Right? And we're not going to throw a bunch of other things into the basket and say, well, it's yes or no on these seven things. And this is one of them. This will have its own warrant.
Yes.
People can make up their own mind about what they want to spend. It's probably going to turn out to be 11 or 12 grand on upkeep for this for this building. Which, by the way, I mean, I look at it and I think I'm with Mark. I think the voters ought to get a chance to weigh in on it in a very clean and concise way. And and I'm happy to do what the voters tell us to do. You know, if the building were finished today, it'd be no question that we would be paying the upkeep on the building. So. So it is what it is. I've got one other select board question, and this is just one for the minutes for when Justin is here next. At our last meeting, Justin said he was going to come back to us with some more specifics on the the one of write off that we did not approve in our last meeting because it was a five-figure write off. And we wanted a little more history before we made a decision on it. That was, I won't say the name, but I'll it was map 43 lot 36.
Yeah.
Of back taxes and we wanted to know more. So.
You have the street address?
It was Howard Drive. It was Howard Drive.
It was Howard Drive. It was Howard Drive.
No.
No.
So. So anyway, just.
But the large amount.
For when the minutes are being created for this meeting, if we could put in a reminder.
And I wrote it down. So.
Needs to be.
I'll just because I usually send him little notes of what we had for questions. So. Yeah.
And Justin sent us a note saying that he's he's been having meetings about the rescue and the dispatch services. And he thinks they're going to will be a doubling for Monmouth?
Yes.
Wow.
It's pretty much. I I speak for on the dispatch end of things. All the town managers from the communities that went to dispatch this floor had a meeting last week and we went over the the plan. Part of the problem is is from 2011 to 2019, there were no increases in dispatch fees other than very minimal based on per capita. So if you per capita, we're not five people. That's how much you're filling what up. And and what has happened is that Winterup has been owing the biggest cost on on running the dispatch center based on the figures. So what we did is we looked at 50% of the calculation based on per capita and then 50% based on usage. And it went from Winterup, Monmouth, Freefield, Mount Vernon, Bayona, Fayette, Wayne, in Manchester. And the way the the calculations work out is pretty much everybody's fees have doubled based on that methodology. And that was a fair way of everybody sharing the cost of running that center. And I you look back on it and say, if if we had kept up like from 2011 to 2019, increased it three to five percent a year, we wouldn't be in this position that that we're in right now because now it's catch up, you know?
So it's no longer going to be based on population, but rather on.
Population, 50% population, 50% on calls to service.
And the two but the two should should coincide, shouldn't they? I mean, the town with a big most population would have the most number of calls.
Right. And with those bearing the biggest cost of that still.
It's the biggest town.
So when we say doubling, how much? What are we paying now?
What what they what our proposal was to the managers is that we would phase it in over three years. 60% first year, 80%, then 100% the third year. And town managers said we would rather look the bandaid and resort. We came back and said, we'll do it at 75% in the first year and then 100%. They agreed to that. So not having the figures right in front of me, I think Monmouth 26 is going to be around 96,000. And then the following year it's going to go up to. I I hate to call this, but I don't remember 110 up top ahead, but I think it's in the ballpark of 112, right?
So currently we're paying something in order of.
What's that? What?
68. I think 68 right now.
So for year one, it's going to be an additional 30, 28.
This budget, what the what 24, let's see, 24 is 51 for dispatch and.
19, yeah, you're not figuring it. You're not figuring in. When I said 69, 68, 69, that was figuring in the 901 service service charge as well. So. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
I have your note. I want to wish the Monmouth Boys Basketball Team good luck tomorrow night in their semifinal game. Seven. I think they've got the seventh game tomorrow. So. The girls lost. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I got a question, but Dan is Dan Roy isn't here. And I was I saw the news today that firefighters have to pay for their own physical exams.
But no, the towns are paying our physical.
The town has been paying because they on the piece that was on the news, you know, the the town or city said that they were the first or only town around who was doing this, was paying for their firefighters insurance and or not insurance, but.
It was just a cancer test.
It was cancer. Yeah.
It was just a cancer test. You're not paying for that. But if the firefighters are going for a cancer test, the town is not included in that payment because it's outside the the scope of their insurance. So they're trying to get the cancer testing, the blood work and all that included into all the communities.
And we're still getting it for free because we've been participating in a in a program that were fairly rare. That's where Dan and some other offices are now in Florida. It's a cancer symposium for firefighter, right? So we're because we're in a special program. We're not paying for that screening and it's your choice to take it if you want it. I take that.
Yeah.
Okay. So right now, Dan is. So we're, right now, uh, Dan is in Florida?
I believe it's Florida, it's like a.
And Justin is in Florida.
All right, I don't know what's going on.
You guys all going to meet somewhere?
It's a big state.
We could have just had the meeting down here and you all could have zoomed in.
Yeah, exactly.
Then we could zoom in from up here.
Yes.
Okay. I'll do uh, we find if we put public comment, everybody's. Okay, so the next is to consider approving a tree growth penalty uh for one forty-four Fish Hatch Tree Road. Can we have some paperwork on that?
Someone want to give us a background of what this is about?
I think Donna, what Donna said is please be advised that a penalty was paid would draw a portion of the property located at one forty-four Fish Hatch Tree Road from the farmland program. Because of this, a withdrawal from the current use program, it is considered a supplemental bill as far as your signatures. I have the necessary paperwork. And if you have any questions, please let me. So that was um and I have one printed off, so I guess if we sign something, we can sign that one.
So both of these are about people who are removing a portion or all of their property from.
An existing program.
An existing tax incentive program and they have to pay penalty in order to remove it.
Yes.
And we just need.
Yeah.
Okay, Donna to.
Last five years.
Last five years, okay. So they're paying back taxes for the last five years.
Yes, because when you take something out of a program, you have to pay five years back.
So I make, I mean, it's a pretty standard thing. I make a motion uh that we approve the tree growth penalty as our assessors advise.
No.
Or.
Farm land.
Okay, the agenda says tree growth, but I am going to be correct.
What Donna says is this says, I don't know that she says. Farm land.
It says farm.
Oh, yeah.
So I withdraw my motion and I make a motion that we approve the farmland growth penalty and supplemental assessment for one forty-four Fish Hatch Tree Road.
I'll second that.
Is this, is this something that the landowner wants?
Well, they have to, they, they have, they have to initiate it, so.
Yeah, we're not throwing them out.
Yeah. They initiate it, they have to.
If they wanted to take it out, realize there's a penalty.
Yeah.
According to Justin, they want to give the property to their offspring to build, to use or to build on.
That's typically how it goes.
Yeah.
So uh Chris has made a motion, I think.
Kent did and I seconded.
Chris seconded it to approve the tree growth penalty and supplemental assessment for one forty-four.
The agenda is wrong.
For one forty-four, for sure.
We can sign, we can sign this one since we're already here, so I'll pass this one.
Yes.
Mark says yes.
Thank you. And.
Second one.
To consider approving, this is for tree growth.
Yeah.
Add supplemental assessment for forty-one Blake Road.
Same, same deal.
Same deal.
I make a motion that we approve the tree growth penalty and supplemental assessment for forty-one Blake Road.
I'll second that.
Well, the motion by Ken, second by Chris. To approve a uh tree growth penalty and supplemental assessment for forty-one Blake Road. What was your favor?
I wrote yes.
Thank you.
Mark, you can sign this when you come by town hall.
I'll do that tomorrow. Thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
And then, I don't, we don't have any uh, do you have a one?
I do. I do, don't worry. Yeah, and I've highlighted it and hopefully I can read numbers. Okay, so.
Yes, you were excited.
I did, but I'm gonna just uh. Second one. Someone's paying a lot of money.
Yeah, they've already paid it.
Yeah.
The check's already.
Check's already cleared.
Yeah.
Right?
Um, so for the one, we have Lurock Earthworks for Materials Transport, two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh EMP, there's numerous, I didn't add them up, but it's somewhere in the range, I'd assume of three thousand dollars, because one of those two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seven cents. There's a bunch of little ones. I didn't go that far to add them all up. EcoMaine for tipping fees, there are three months here for five thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Baby and Oil, Propane, three thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and seventeen cents. Criminal Industries for demo waste, two thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty cents. Haze Communications for Chiefs mobile radio installation, twenty-eight thou, twenty-eight hundred dollars, sorry. See, I, I have never been reading numbers, so. Um, the iWork, which is the text my gov app for twenty twenty-five management and support, four thousand dollars. Uh, Main Equalization Consultants for Assessing Services, two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Main Municipal for Unemployment Benefits Insurance, one thousand sixty dollars and fifty cents. Main Municipal for the twenty twenty-five municipal membership, five thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Main Technology Group for the monthly services. Um, there are two of those, two thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-one cents. Sorry, and four hu, four hundred and twenty-two dollars for a total of three thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Main Waste to Energy for tipping fees, five thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-one cents. New England Salt Company for our, the icing salt, five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, and that is for diesel exhaust fluid and foam, one thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Isabel, our planner, whose name we can't pronounce, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Rinaldi Energy for Fuel, seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, six thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Um, DF, BIF and W for the Moses Report, um, seven thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents for a grand total of ninety-one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Make a motion, what's the Moses?
Moses is um.
Life.
Or, yeah.
Okay. That's the registration.
Boots, AEs.
Snowmobiles. Yeah, exactly.
I make a motion, uh, we approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five warrant number fourteen.
I'll second that.
That was a motion by Ken, second by Chris to approve the warrant number fourteen for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
I make a motion. Mark says yes. I make a motion that we adjourn prior to seven PM. It's currently six fifty-nine.
God, that, that watch, we're seven, one minute past seven. I'll second that.